Grace, you want to use some place, please? Okay, we'll call please.
Kenny David, Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Carol's will see here. Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Frank Scott.
Here.
Everybody look at the agenda. Any difference or any new things?
I have none.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda as is.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Wait a second.
Support.
Motion and support, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any public comment in the room? Yes, Mr. Durst. Do you step forward?
Thank you.
We have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, sit down, would you like me to?
Yes, I'd love you to sit down.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Phil Durst. I contrary what my shirt says, I am representing the Oremont EDC right now, I'm wearing that hat. So I'm coming to you on behalf of the Oremont EDC. And I understand that the EDC is on the chopping block as you evaluate your budget. I understand the difficulties of your budget. I want to make a case for the EDC, if I may, right? First of all, I want to make a case that you do not cut, but ultimately that you do not eliminate the line item for the EDC. This is really important that you maintain the contractual relationship that we have with the county, with you, to provide economic development services in the county. We have that contract with you. And there's some data I'd like to share with you, data that comes from Jobs EQ and it's for Oremont County. And Jobs EQ, there is a report. That is quite a, a report. And the data that I, that I found just, and I pulled these out of my file, and then that's all I had, was it quarter one, two thousand twenty-three compared to quarter one, two thousand twenty-two, Oremont County increased by two hundred seventy-four jobs. Compared to quarter four, two thousand nineteen, just another year away, or two years away, we've increased four hundred sixty-one jobs in the county. Jobs in the county held by taxpayers in the county. And it'd be nice to think that that increase in jobs would just occur on its own. It'd be nice to think that the tooth fairy left money under our pillows. The reality is that job growth, job, business movement, business growth does not occur simply by hoping it might. It occurs when people working together, people working together to, to, to make a better business climate, to encourage business, to help businesses. And the EDC is a central part of that. The EDC currently in just two thousand twenty-three has provided in partnership with Michigan Works, a hundred twenty thousand dollars for employee training as part of the GoPro. That's a hundred twenty thousand dollars in this county providing training in this year, two thousand twenty-three. And the EDC is also focused on the long-term challenges to job growth, including housing, childcare, broadband, working in all three of those initiatives to help reduce the barriers to further job growth in this county. I understand, I know that you have a tight budget. One might say it's more than tight. But I also know that when you invest in the EDC, you get a good rate of return. And the way to make money is to invest in things that provide you a good rate of return. I encourage you to work not to cut, certainly not to eliminate the EDC in your budget. Thank you for your time. And I take any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Where do we get the money?
Commissioner Simmons, I, I don't have that answer for you.
And I don't either.
That's a question that you have to talk with. We're talking thirty-five thousand dollars in a multimillion dollar budget.
Yeah. Every penny counts.
Thank you.
I'm, Mr. Durst. I'm not saying it's not a valuable asset to this county, I'm not saying that. But.
Question that I would have is, if you cut it.
Yes.
And you suffer the results of that cut by decreased number of jobs.
Yes.
By decreased job in the future, not just jobs in one year, but jobs in the future, does that ultimately benefit the county?
Probably not. But I have to think about September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. And I have to come up with a balanced budget. If you have any ideas how we can get there, I would certainly appreciate. You know, we're looking at non-mandated things. I don't know where else we can go. If you have any ideas, please don't hesitate to give them to us, please. Do I think the EDC is important? You bet I do. I just don't know how I can pay for it. That's my problem. If anyone can come up with any ideas of how to grow a money tree and we just pick it off and pay everybody. You know, we're such a small county. We know everybody here. I don't want to lay anybody off. I don't want to lose anything. Well, my check says I got a hundred dollars and I got five hundred dollars worth of expenses. There's something I can't have. And that's the hard part for us. And we don't like it, we definitely do not like it. You don't know how hard this is on us.
I, I.
We are human beings, just like you are. We have feelings just like you have. We care about the people of this county. And now we have to maybe hurt some of our friends. And you have to take off the emotional hardship, and I'm having a hard time doing that. And put on the business hat strictly. And that's hard to do. I can't tell you how hard it is. I can't imagine there's not one commissioner here that's, this is the number one thing that's on his mind, isn't hurt every single day. I notice mine. And I, I, I look at so many things trying to find a way. And I haven't found that way yet. So I understand completely why EDC is so important. I just don't know how we can pay for everything. Because the money's not there. Thank you.
Ryan, thanks for coming.
Yes.
Thanks, Bill, for coming.
Thank you for starting.
Where are you? We just started with the, uh, Durst's public comment. EDC, and he gave us some good pointers about not to eliminate the EDC. About the increase in jobs in the few years, we, we have increased in, in Oremont County, what, three last three years, four hundred sixty-one jobs. And, you know, it's job growth and it's, uh, business growth. And that, uh, EDC has brought a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of training to people that have come here to learn how to do jobs. And, and it is an asset to this county.
Great.
I just don't know how to pay for it. I wish I did. And that's where we are right now.
So you're still on public comment?
Yep.
Yes. Is there any other public comment in the room?
Comment on one of your discussion items, you want me to wait till you get there, or?
Um, is it on the agenda item? Nope, come on up. Does you want to do this during, during public comment?
It's on the abuse prevention policy. We reviewed the policy, juvenile director as well as besides worst. In theory, this is great, there's a couple issues as it relates to our court. Obviously, if my court is juveniles, one of the big concerns are the four B where employees are restricted from being alone with a child. I have two probation officers, they have their each own, their caseload. So I don't know how practical that would be. So just, I don't know if you need to talk with your insurer. I think my understanding is this is something the insurer wants, so just make sure are we going to handle that situation? Because I don't have, obviously staff that have two people meet with every kid every time. So that's, that's a concern and.
What number was, why were we?
Be.
Okay, I'm looking.
Employees are restricted from being alone with a child.
There it is, okay.
It's not just the probation officers either, we have court mentors, which by definition is one-on-one with a child. Um, so we have that and sometimes, uh, surveil or transfer job, transportation and stuff like that. So I just want to point that out, that that could be in conflict with how we actually do things right now and whether or not that's a way around that or whether how we're going to address that, I guess. Like I said, I don't have extra probation officers. I did have two people meet with a child every time, send two mentors out every time, have two people transport every time. So that's, that's a concern we have. Second, like on five C, employees must not use any type of restraining device. Well, we do that. Handcuffs, we have kids coming in that need them. I'm, I am, uh, I have, I follow the rules of the state of Michigan, there are certain things that they, I have to show and they're going to be handcuffed in their court proceedings, but usually transporting to and from secure facilities, they're usually handcuffed. Um, so I just want that brought out and like I say, rest of the policy, I get the, the general intent, but I just want to know there's a couple of practical concerns that could come into play. Um, quite frankly, I don't know the court system be bound by this policy, but at the same time, you're providing the assurance, so that's why I'm bringing it up now, because I don't know, so. Do you have anything else?
Uh, no, I think you pretty much covered it. I think mine is a different, I have a different numbering in order. But, um, you know, they're talking about programs having an established adult-child ratio. Essentially, on my document, it's five A through D. But yours indicated four.
To say the biggest issue, but I got, I do have people that are alone with kids.
Correct.
They go through their background checks, they go through the, the, uh, clearances and everything, the fingerprinting, uh, every five years. Um, it's an automatic thing, so I, I, we have those safeguards, but as far as preventing any one-on-one contact, that's, that's that's going to be tough. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, maybe talk with your, you know, insurance company or attorneys. Advise them of the situation, so, um, because I don't know, I know you don't have money to hire extra people for me to, so I'm not even going there.
You think that that statement actually increases our liability? But.
But. Your honor, only trained personnel will be alone with them, right?
Trained, basically it's the probation officers, the mentors and transporters at times. If there's a, if there's a child going to secure, we usually, we have to, but like if somebody's going to pick them up for a counseling appointment, we only usually sign one person.
But it be a trained person.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, they're, they're RDSS worker.
So if it was an untrained employee, cannot see.
If not, Joe, well off the street, you know, they're saying, hey, can you pick up?
I mean, if it said untrained employees cannot be left.
Untrained or untrained or un.
Certified or whatever.
Yeah. As I said, we run the background checks on everybody. The fingerprint records, we make sure to the best we can that they're, they're a suitable person.
Right.
Um, so that's, that's the only thing we wanted to bring up, that that could be a little contrary to this rest of policy, where it.
Well, and just to add, when we're using restraints, obviously that's typically in a situation where we have volunteers that are transporting to a secured detention facility. And the way that those, that's a, a program run through the state essentially passed through dollars that allow us to have these people transport. And that is a policy, they have to be cuffed.
They have to be cuffed when they're going to detention.
Uh, so it's.
Well, we have two people with them too.
And those are always two transporters, yeah.
So and that's for everyone's safety and then, so they don't jump out in the car, so they don't hurt anybody, et cetera, so.
Makes sense.
But that's basically what we just wanted to bring to your attention.
Sure.
This abuse policy, it just uh, deals with children, right?
The abuse prevention policy that's.
It appears to be focused on youth, yes.
What about the elderly? There's a lot of elder abuse. We're not going to cover that here.
We don't.
We don't work in that environment.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Who appoints the guardians? Elder, right?
The guardians are also trained, or now we only have, well, I shouldn't say that, because anybody can choose whatever guardian they want. So if they want a family member, a friend, um, there's a priority list and who the person wants, as long as I find that they're suitable, um, I have to appoint them. There, I think we're using about two public guardians right now, because we're really, we're usually that way, when the villa or something needs a guardian and there's no family in the area. Uh, we have two people that are appointed public guardians, and they've been through the trainings and they're bonded, um, so.
I know there's one guardian in the area from elder and he's just been to court. Um, I think it was a federal court. He's appointed by you and has no, has no assistant from you, is that correct?
And what now?
Where are you headed with this?
Well, I mean, we're talking about abuse, right?
Well, we're talking about the policy, that's the only thing we have control over.
Yeah, if there's a guardian doing something he's not, he or she's not supposed to be doing, I mean, that's obviously, I gotta appoint them unless, like I say, it's, it's, the person gets to choose their own guardian.
And the guardian has been taken away for no reason, I don't understand.
I don't know, I don't know which one you're talking about.
I'll get with you.
Tim, is this, is this, this abuse prevention policy, I think it was an excellent question. Is, is this, this is just for children, this is not for?
So this policy, when the insurance carrier presented it, uh, the trigger was uh, the knowledge that now, for whatever reason, um, over at Transit, they are transporting a lot of youth who aren't attended, there's no adult, you know, supervision with them, and I mean, young kids. And they, um, got pretty concerned about that a year ago, they went through this similar exercise with the sheriff's office, and the sheriff's office produced internal policies that were satisfactory to, uh, the carrier. But when they learned about what's happening with our transit, now transporting youth, that's what got them a little skittish. And they said, you need to adopt this, you know, by October one, or we're not going to cover abuse. Uh, so that's, that's literally the origin of it. And I think what the judge has mentioned here, we can easily address with, uh, new sentence at the end of each one of those, with an exception of all designated court personnel. And just cover it that way. Uh, and that's, that covers all the programs, that's all, anything to a friend of the court, probate, any of it. Ends up being covered. You mentioned, um, something about state, uh, policy or something about when it came to the.
That involves like.
That's going to give us something to fall back on, to say there is some guidance there from the state that tells us how to, uh, approach this. So I, I think that'll work, I'll certainly, uh, I'll make that page and shoot it over to the carrier and say, what do you think about this? We might wordsmith it a little bit, but I, I think it can be addressed right within the document.
And I'm happy to get some of those policies from the regional detention support services.
Okay.
I'm happy to share that.
Excellent. Great.
Yeah, we'll give you everything we need, we just wanted to point this out, because it's, what we do is not going to be consistent with this as it stands right now, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Could open more liability for us. We want to make.
Well, and that's, that's.
Right, so we need to fix this.
That's, that's why we need to make sure the insurer is going to cover if something did happen, so.
Absolutely.
Because I, I get it, that's what the purpose is, so.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any other public comment? In the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item four appointments, A. Brian Gilbert, Sheriff, related to the re, refamily shelter agreement. Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good, you?
Good. That's something that the undershare's been working on, so I'm not really up on that contract, so I think Tim could probably enlighten us.
The, the current contract expires at the end of the fiscal year, and so this is a renewal. I don't believe there's much different in it at all, I didn't find anything different in it, I believe all the rates are the same. Uh, so it's just a matter of renewing that agreement. This is when animal control picks up, uh, an animal and we need to take it someplace for shelter, this, this is where he goes.
Question? We've stayed within the budget, correct?
We have, um, there is the, uh, overage number in there, so if we go over a certain number of animals, I think it's an additional fifty dollars. But we, looking at our history, I believe we've budgeted enough for that. Uh, so that's confident that we can do as, we've done as well as we can with it.
And they've had enough, uh, holding the shelter for the animals? For the, there hasn't been any issues with that?
Been any, any problems, they do a great job for us.
And this is an annual contract, correct?
It is.
Questions, comments? Thanks. Item two USDA grants. Oh, so I'm sorry.
Really, you're going to just skip right over this one?
Well, I asked if anybody had any questions. Did you have a question?
I just. It's not a, it's not a mandatory service, I mean, you know, last night we were cutting back the smallest little items and I, I'm just curious, I, I, just surprised that you just, seven thousand dollars, you just kept them right past it.
I asked if any commissioners had any questions, I don't have any.
Okay, but I don't either.
Anybody else? USDA grants.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah.
Somebody.
What we're looking at, uh, we would like to readdress the USDA grant, um. And what we failed to explain is that it's got a three-year window in it, so we have three years to take advantage of this grant uh, for them vehicles. Um, what I'm, what concerns me is if we don't accept the grant, we're going to be put on the back burner for when we do need it. And then, uh, we might have problems. And obviously, our, our, uh, work involves vehicles, we have to have vehicles, and I'm going to give it some serious look on the traffic car and also drug interdiction, uh, enforcement after our conversation last night. Um, I'm really giving it some really serious thought. I don't want to commit to it right now, because I want my undershare involved in this conversation. Um, I don't foresee any problem with that, so. Um, with that in mind, um, I'm going to need, I might need probably, you know, cars to, to perform this duty. Um, and we're gonna, we're gonna see what we can shake out of it. See what, uh, kind of numbers we can get, I can't promise you nothing, because I, I don't have it in place right now. Uh, but I'll certainly do what we can do there, but I want to, I want confirmation from my undershare who, who helps me make decisions, and we don't make decisions on our own, we do it together. So, uh, with that in mind, I would, I would hope that you would, uh, reevaluate that, that USD grant, sign it. And we have a three-and-a-half-year window for that, for that particular grant, so.
But then do we have to utilize that, if we are still in budget, uh, constraints, can that be returned anytime with, we, you know, unfortunately returned it three years?
That would be yours.
Yours. What, basically, if, if if we can get a resolution for next week to accept the two USDA grants, then they'll hold them, two grants for up to three years for us. Um, if we, at the end of the three years, if, if they're not utilized, we'll obviously lose them. Um, I, I don't foresee this, hopefully not going that far, not needing cars, obviously. So if we can, you know, we get it, just basically, we got to have a sign before their fiscal year, which is October first, just like ours. Uh, and then they can hold those funds for up to three years. At the end of the three years, yeah, if, if they're not used, we'll lose them, obviously. Um, if we, and in the meantime, if, if we don't use them, we can still apply for grants through them for other stuff, if we want. Doesn't penalize us. If we don't use the vehicle grants right off the get-go, but obviously, we're going to need, we're going to need cars. The, the fleet's getting old and wore out and.
And so I do, I do see this, this, there's verification here, so sorry for the second email after, for the discussion, my program director, we thought that the county may want to reconsider obligating these two grants, knowing that they can be remain obligated but unliquidated for up to three years.
Correct. Yep. And so, I mean, there's, there's no, no cost to the county to just say, yep, please hang on to them for three years, we may utilize them.
I just want to make sure that they, that then we don't have to utilize those within the three years, we can return those.
We can return them, yep. At the end of the three years. I mean, I don't see why we'd want to turn them back in before the end of three years, because who knows, you know? Something can change next year, who knows? But, you know, we don't, obviously don't have that crystal ball in front of us, but I, I think it would be in our best interest to at least hang on to those grants. Because as we know, money's getting tight for everybody. Now, we're already obligated these funds. Why, why would we want to give them up? If we don't have to at this point?
Questions?
I guess that's my thing, is I'd like to get a resolution for next week for you guys to vote on. And that way we can get it in to them before the first.
Well, questions, Commissioner Wiltie?
I mean, I think it's a pretty easy decision. So I mean, we have three years and as long as there's, uh, you know, no, there's nothing that we're missing, I mean, I think we should do it for sure. Absolutely.
Right, and I apologize for, because that should have been brought up at the beginning, but it's never been an issue of usually, you know, we get to get the grants and say, yay, us, you know, we don't ever, we don't ever turn them down, you know, it's always.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it. It has been an issue before, because we've been told we had to get them right away. Or we would lose them. And nobody's ever said anything about a three-year window before, it was always.
New, but they're, that's what they got in the.
Well, okay, well, maybe it's new.
Maybe it's new, I don't know.
But yeah, I, I agree with.
We just want to be transparent.
You can hold on to it for three years without that to spend it.
Yeah.
As long as, you know, it's a commissioner decision.
Well, of course.
Commissioner Simmons?
That was for three years, and that sixty-five thousand dollars we have for a car and is a budget, we can take it up, put it back in the general fund, right?
If you decide not to do it this year, yeah.
I thought we already did, made that decision.
Still there.
Still there pending this discussion tonight, they have no idea.
I want it back in the general fund.
No, we denied that.
But, yeah, we're not going to spend it, they don't need that money sitting there doing nothing.
Commissioner Simmons? Hold on. Go ahead.
Well, we just haven't had a formal vote on a, on budgets yet, on even, we haven't really had formal, uh, votes on on parts of the budget. You know, I mean, we've just, it's discussion this, it's discussion that. One, one overbearing commissioner may have something on one thing and another one might have another on another thing. We just, it's just this discussion until there's a, a, a real vote on it.
We, hold on, hold on, Commissioner Simmons, we, we did take a vote on that, we, we denied it last meeting, so I, I apologize.
Yes, we did.
So we did.
Yeah, but we didn't, but as far as the budget, we didn't say we'd take the, we didn't, we didn't say in that, in that motion, it was denied the use of the grants. And we didn't make the motion to not, to take that money out of the budget.
That's true. It is true. So any, just, I guess, just to be clear about the budget, since we're kind of talking about that right now. Any decision that was made last night, I, I guess we need to make sure, i- is that what you're saying, Commissioner Scott? Decisions that we, we made last night need to, you would like to see them in a resolution?
Yeah, I would. Uh, I would think that since we had a special meeting about the budget and we are the commission, we can make motions and we can vote on things if this commission decides that way.
So you would like to see the USDA grant out there for next week?
I would, to, to just to lock it in.
Commissioner Simmons?
Like I said, there's no cost to anybody at this point. No commitment, there's no commitment. So.
Commissioner Simmons?
And I would like to see a resolution on, on the agenda next, next week to remove the sixty-five thousand dollars for the car and put it back in the general fund, that's what I'd like to see. If we have three and a half years, we don't need that money.
By next Thursday, we got to have a, we got to have a, a, a motion for a whole budget.
I know.
Entirely.
That's the plan. Tim, did you have a, a con?
Well, just, um, logistics of this, we have our meeting on Monday, I can present a, a that update sheet that either shows this in or out, you know, whatever you want to do with it. Um, I, I think we've got two separate questions though, so we'll have that conversation for sure on Monday. And then on Thursday, you'll be able to decide whether or not to accept the grant, so you, I'm seeing two different here. Do you want on the drafts that you see for Monday to have that removed, that line, uh, allocation removed?
Yes.
And that's what you'll see then on Monday, and then that becomes part of the working document that hopefully we'll have ready for Thursday.
But you can still accept the grant, because you've got three years to.
We'll write that right into the resolution, there, standing, we have three years.
Yeah.
And we'll use his, uh,
Absolutely.
unliquidated language here, just to make sure we all.
It can be used the first week of October. It can be used the first week of October. Obviously, it's not going to for three years or two and a half years for two years, whatever. So. But.
You just contributed. Thank you.
Okay, and I apologize because you guys didn't have all the information.
Okay.
Uh, when you voted last time on this, I apologize for that. Like I said, it's never been an issue before. Uh, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Veder, planning and zoning administrator. Good news. Bring us good news.
Evening. Well.
Kind of.
Could be good news.
Right.
So you have in your packet, um, additional county is circulating a resolution to oppose the legislation to preempt the local control of solar and wind development. Um, if you've read through the resolution just a little bit there, you know, the, the state of Michigan is trying to achieve a hundred percent carbon neutrality in Michigan by twenty fifty. A more current goal that we've all been finding community that they've talked to us about is um actually, they're trying to get to renewable energy usage in Michigan at sixty-five percent by twenty thirty. Um, as of twenty twenty-three, we're at fifteen percent. So part of the reason for this preemption, and it says right here in the resolution itself, is um they'd like the Michigan Public Service Commission be the sole regulating authority for solar and wind projects to expedite these efforts. So this is more, this is more to help get these projects going. Um, currently, what would happen if, if we were preempted, we would not have any local control of it. That means county, township, cities, or villages would be unable to determine the location, size, setback, distance, decimal level, or any other criteria for any solar or wind, wind facilities. Um, would preempt anything that we currently have as far as solar and wind ordinances in our zoning ordinance right now, which we do have.
Yes.
And are currently reviewing um the, the bad part about that is currently all other types of energy right now are facilities are regulated by the Michigan Public Service Commission. However, none of them are exempt from zoning. So this would be the first energy solution we would try to exempt from zoning. It, it's bad. Uh, currently, there are two bills in the House and Senate right now for other preemption uh for sand and gravel, um, mining oversight preemption. Um, there's one that's been there for a while now. Commissioner Scott will remember the short-term vacation rental preemption right now as well, too, which is causing some concern in the county and some of our lakes as well. Um, current preemption we have right now is federal and state preemption on telecommu- telecommunications towers. And in talking about the federal and state preemption for telecommunications towers, they haven't gone so much as to take our authority away from that. They've kind of taken a little bit of the authority away from it, but one of the biggest things they put into place with those imagine is to help expedite those. They've, they put us on a shot clock. Um, existing telecommunications facilities that are looking to upgrade, we're on a sixty-day window for them. Now, new ones, we're in a ninety-day window for it. So there are some things that can be done to help expedite this stuff without actually taking the control away from us here. And, and a lot of this is coming from the energy industry itself. They're, they're reaching some, some um opposition in a lot of places, especially wind energy. Um, Montgomery County, um, actually, they had four separate ballot initiatives that were, that were shut down for commercial wind energy products. They actually also recalled seven officials because of their support for and or their financial ties to these turbine projects. Um, they're trying to say other Midwest states like Ohio, Michigan, or Ohio, Wisconsin, and Minnesota have all given that authority to the state level. Um, in fact, pretty pretty convincing evidence here. Actually, Ohio, back in twenty twenty-one, actually returned that veto power back to the counties because um, it, it's just a bad thing that we're being targeted here in Oldham County and a lot of rural communities are being targeted because of our large areas of agricultural. So they're flat, they're relatively clear, they're easy for these projects. Um, plus we have the room for them. Um, I could go through and show you a bunch of numbers that talks about the decrease in farmland here in Oldham County from, you know, twenty twelve to ninety-seven to, to actually recent times. But I don't think anybody would agree here. We're, we're losing farmland here in, in Oldham County.
So this resolution, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. This resolution is saying that we don't support
Correct.
them coming in and taking over and taking all rights away from landowners and farmers, correct?
Correct. So what this will is it'll take the voice away from the people. So instead of dealing with these issues locally and being able to hear individuals that might have problems or concerns with it, this is gonna have to handle that to Michigan, the State Service Commission.
Well, this isn't affecting her, her point is affecting the property owners. Now, joining property owners.
The joining property owners.
But, but not property owners that are on it.
Correct.
This is local control. This is just a matter of local control. They're trying to take more control away.
Right.
Yeah, that's not what I want.
So though, so like when we do a special use permit, one and we have a special hearings, we, we offer public comment. People can come in and offer their comments on the project. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. That would be taken away from us. That would be done at the state level. Um, and I, and I'll tell you from experience, people here aren't gonna travel. People are not gonna travel down to a hearing in Lincoln uh
Right.
to voice their opinions, nor will they be heard.
So this resolution is supporting that?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I, I, I read that correctly and I, okay, Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, that was a few years ago back when I was kind of commissioner. I brought an expert up here to Oldham County. When the commissioners were in a pass, um, a farmer to have wind turbines. And it was, uh, there was a lot of grant money out there and my opinion was at the time that that guy was gonna grab the grant money, start it, and then just leave, and he's got the money and we're stuck with the mess. So, and there were some people that were a little angry with me. I guess O P E now, but he, he, he brought the information forward and showed us. And uh, this same individual has also spoken to uh um to me, he's in, in Washington DC about this same issue. And um so we have ordinances now that pretty much prohibit wind turbines for going up. But before that, we'd have been fodder and they were in it for the money. And so they could just plain old retire, never had to work anymore. And uh you, it would, if you go down and you see all these big wind turbines that stand, you know, taller than the tallest tree and they're humming hmm all the time. You know, it, it's, it's a nuisance. And over time, it will also affect your hearing.
Yeah.
So we, we, we want local control. We like the local control we have. We'd like the ordinances we have. Uh, and we had the expert up here to show us the stuff and he's even been, like I said, Washington DC.
And, and I don't think anybody's arguing against, I mean, we need renewable energy and we need to quit relying on those things and we need to get to that carbon neutrality as fast as we can. This unfortunately is not the way to do it. Um, there are ways to do it. There's a lot of other things to consider in, in these renewable energy plans, which not only deals with these wind farms or these giant solar farms, uh, it's kind of go down to the residential level as well, too. We need, we need to change, we need to promote those things at the residential level as well, too. So it, it is just a bad it's bad to take this away from people. Every, every community is their own. They should have the power to decide what happens. Um, and then if, if they don't like the decisions that, for instance, a planning commission makes, there are recourses for them to, to correct them as well, too. So um so, yeah, I, I would appreciate your support on that. I think it is very important for, for Oldham County to be on board with this. And I, I think you'll see um, the majority of the counties, if not all of them, will, I'd be surprised if there isn't any that aren't supportive of this.
So once we vote on this resolution, are we going to then um uh pass this along like a lot of, uh, we see a lot of the uh consent or, uh, what can I think, correspondence? Are we gonna pass this on? Okay. It comes to me. I was just a little slow. Any other comments?
Um, I mean, for me, support this a thousand percent. I mean, it's just that typical thing you see more and more, you know, state trying to take whatever rule of control. And I think these type of things, we need to be more united than ever on. Um, that new committee that I'm on with the collaboration of the counties, this, this was brought up at our first Zoom conference call. And it was a clear one hundred percent support amongst all the county commissioners that this type of stuff we need to stay again united on. Make sure that we try to keep what control we can maintain.
We currently have numerous companies in Oldham County that have probably signed dozens, maybe even a hundred leases with individuals for solar farms on their property, on agricultural property, which right now we don't allow on agricultural property. So we are gonna be looking into that at the planning commission level. Um, consumers is telling me, oh, we only need two percent of your, your, your ag land in Oldham County. Well, two percent is two percent. This is the land that feeds us or feeds, that feed us. So with that being our predominant land use here in Oldham County, I mean, this has a potential to change the landscape of the county quickly and, and not necessarily for the better. So would appreciate your support.
Mr. Scott, did you have anything?
No.
We'll put this on for next week. Thanks, Ryan.
I just think that two percent is the starting point. It would grow after that, believe me.
Give me two and I'll take twice.
That's right. And then next, I'll take twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Item five, discussion items. A agreement for extension services. Come on up.
Hi. Back. Hi there. Um, so uh when this was introduced, um, I said again that this was the standard agreement. Um, it does reflect a two and a half percent increase in the um, in the um allocation that is paid on a quarterly basis to Michigan State for extension services. The money comes out of the special fund for MSU extension from the county millage. Um, Mr. Dolehany reached out to me um with a, with a change that he had asked for in twenty twenty-two. Um, and um, and so that change was approved by MSU, um, the change that was suggested, which was not, not to prescribe a certain percentage of the support staff's time specifically. Um, but just that it says that um, we have clerical support and it, it, that would allow flexibility for the county if there was a need to change um, from the current point nine five of full-time to a lower amount. Or even increase it. I mean, it doesn't bind either way. Um, that said, um, the amount of the agreement is eighty-two thousand. Excuse me, now I'm, it's now.
Eighty-two thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars.
Six hundred and fifty-nine dollars, right? Um, and that, like I said, it comes out of the special fund budget, which is two seven three.
Commissioner Wiltie, did you have anything on this?
No, no, I have for last night. Everything's cleared up.
Okay, and the university did sign it, so it allows Oklahoma County to be the final signatory on that amendment. So the version that you have um in your packet has the, shows the signature.
What do you mean?
Just our attempt to look at every, every possibility.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I'm not hostile to any of the inquiry, inquiry.
The two point five percent, can you, I guess, can you explain that increase?
Yeah, so that's um, that's an increase uh based on increasing costs for labor um that were just across the board. So every county has the same percentage increase um based on their, um, based on the memorandum of agreement base. Um, just as a way of understanding, um, this year, uh, staff uh across the university at different levels um will, will receive a three to four percent increase based on performance. Um, and some staff might receive up to five percent, but that's part of our performance process. So two and a half percent is, I mean, we sort of think of it as lower than inflation, but still it's, it's sort of the minor increased cost of business. So.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have anything?
I don't know any increase on anything right now. It's like I don't know why we're gonna pay for it. That, that's all I can say. And that'll be right. I just push a button and just keep saying, I don't know, we're gonna pay for it.
Cost of labor and we have.
Gone up, exactly.
We have contracts, so that, that, that clerical person is in the steelworkers, so there's a, there's a contractual increase.
This is no cost of a county. This comes out of the millage.
This comes out of the millage. Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I didn't.
The village, the, the projected revenue for the village is around a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. When I completed my budget calculation, I calculated that expenses would be around a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And I think honestly, the difference is around two hundred dollars between um expenses and revenues with the revenue side benefiting by about two hundred dollars. Now, it is possible that revenues could exceed the projection, the revenues collected could exceed the projection. Um, but, but I will have a plan for any um, fund balance, not so that I'm not building up a fund balance that is not used or that is not utilized. Um, and that would be to create a collaborative, well, I'll just wait, I'll just wait. I have future plans, but let's see if we get the money. So if we get the money, we can do other things, but there's no cost out of the general fund in this.
Okay, I got it. I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this an annual contract?
Like that.
It is an annual contract and it does cover um the fiscal year. It is, it is aligned with your fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Julie.
Item B, abuse and prevention policy. Did you have anything else on that, Tim?
I don't. Um, we can just reemphasize the genesis of the whole thing was the concern with our transit and they're transporting the younger kids now. Uh, and so the carrier just wants to make sure we all understand how serious that is. And I think that goes without saying, but I understand the need of a policy.
Does the sheriff's office look into this policy as well because they transport?
They, they were provided a copy, but like I said, the carrier was satisfied with the department policies. And again, they're kind of a different uh operation than, say, the general uh county employee is because they're out enforcing laws. And so there may be times, um, you know, where some of this just isn't going to apply, given their situation. But the carrier is already on record saying they're satisfied with the department policy.
Okay, so you'll get back to us on that? How quick do they?
We want this adopted by the end of the month, which will mean obviously Thursday. So I will send uh the draft with the new language to them. Uh, probably tonight even and get their feedback. But again, given what we heard tonight, particularly with the fallback policies that the state has on our personnel who are handling these juveniles, I think they're gonna be fine with it.
Okay. Uh, items, any questions on that, commissioners? Item C, Masters Pharmaceutical Settlement Agreement.
And this is um just the latest in the series of opioid settlements that have come through. This one unfortunately is only seven hundred seventy-five dollars in total. Uh, whereas the other ones have been in the hundreds of thousands, but we still need to go through the formal adoption of the settlement agreement before we're eligible for those funds. Uh, the good news, I know it's a small amount, but the good news is these funds are not restricted uh to appendixy or anything else. They can go right to the general fund if that's the board's desire.
I said we put it directly to the general fund.
I, I thought were we still waiting to hear? I don't disagree with you, but weren't we, didn't, weren't we waiting on feedback on that?
Well, this is a separate settlement agreement
Right.
from the others that we've had. And the attorneys that negotiated this agreement uh wrote right in the emails that they sent to all their clients that these are not restricted funds like the other funds are. So they've already determined whatever language that they've come up with in the final settlement with Masters uh that any community receiving these funds can use it for whatever purpose they seek that.
So this is different from the other monies that we have right now.
Right, but we're still gonna have to make sure that we can show what we're utilizing this for. Yes, into the general fund, but how about for, like we said, the MAC subscription, there's, you know, there's gotta be something to trace this. We can't just throw it in the general fund with no explanation.
Well, we kind of can. And then you pick, what, seven hundred seventy-five dollar items.
Not that that's.
Later. I don't think we're gonna see an audit on this one, so.
Okay. Was there more to come from? What company was this?
This is Masters Pharmaceutical. Uh, the reason why their number is so small, they have already gone through bankruptcy and so they're pretty much destroyed anyone's left.
No questions on it? Item D, Park and Recreations Commission Application for Appointment.
Well, Parks and Recreation uh and have an application for appointment for a a member of our committee, Dan Johnson. He's a retired from our nine-one-one. Been a county employee. He's from Mills Township. He's uh uh very interested in the high banks project and all that. They, he met with the the, the Parks and Rec Committee and we voted there to uh, to accept his application. And but it comes in front of the commissioners for final approval.
I think this would be an excellent asset. He lives right there in Mills Township. I think this would be an excellent asset. He lives right there in Mills Township. Questions, comments?
No, I'm for it.
How long is this good for? How long is he serving on the committee?
Uh, there is a term. I I don't know what his term went to slot. I think it's a three year term or something like.
Did she write that in the resolution too?
Thanks.
Nature Park Proof Quote.
Once again, Parks and Recreation, uh, the Nature Park, uh, Hall up up at the nature park is uh, needing a roof. And uh, we're the Parks and Rec Committee's asking for ARPA funds to pay for the re-roofing. We have a price for, we put it out for bid and received no bids. So then we went out and I got a quote from Thompson Builders for seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars. And they'll, you know, they'll just reshingle it.
I have a question. Did you say that you're asking for ARPA funds to pay this?
Yeah.
How much money do you guys have in your five oh one C three?
Well, um, we're going through uh, uh, a um, uh, what do you call it? Conservant. Conservant.
Oh, we're gonna have it as.
Let me see here.
Everlasting thing.
Yeah.
Same thing as uh.
Being converted right.
It's a perpetual thing that'll last forever.
What are we talking about? What's a perpetual thing?
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna.
The nature park has a private five oh one C three group.
Okay.
Called Friends of the Nature, Friends of the Deer Refuge and uh, we've been making money on the side, going into the. Yeah, suffered from the county.
Yep.
And right now, we're we're uh, we're having it. Uh, a endowment set up.
That's right. That's what it is.
A a permanent endowment set up. So right now, uh, the monies are tied up.
For what period of time?
I don't know. I don't know all the particulars on it.
Who's?
Uh, Bob Griffin Junior. He's he's uh, he's at, he has now been named the executive to the for the five oh one C three. One person had to be that and that's where we're at.
How much monies do you have in that account, though?
I think there's around fifty thousand.
Commissioners.
My question is, if 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 we approve this, will the endowment fund pay us back?
Uh, I can't say that right now.
You need to talk to Parks and Rec.
Well, I'll have to talk to the members of the.
Five oh one C.
Five oh one C three.
Right.
Which is Parks and Rec, correct?
No, no, it's totally separate from the county and the Parks and Rec. It's a five oh one C three group that's just a fundraising group for the nature park.
Okay.
Completely separate from the county.
Yep.
So.
That donates money to the county for for things.
Why does this roof, yeah, why does this roof need to be replaced?
It's leaking.
It leaks.
It is leaking. How long's it been leaking?
I guess it's been leaking a little while, a couple years.
Commissioners, we'll see.
Well, I mean, I think it's great what they got going out there. We're gonna try to do the same thing at the high banks. Um, but you know, you can go spend a hundred and fifty dollars on a tarp, put the tarp on it.
Yeah.
And then when the endowment's ready, use your money. You guys are in a good position out there. That's what you have it for, fundraising's for.
Good.
And Bob's been instrumental by doing that and I give him props on that, but you know, we have people screaming about spending ARPA funds.
This is county owned property.
I understand.
Okay. Okay.
I just think, I I don't, I don't like the idea of using ARPA funds.
I I agree. I I agree a hundred percent, especially with where we are right now financially.
I agree.
Mr. Mahew.
I agree.
But thank you for bringing this to us.
Okay, well, I'm just, if the five one C three group doesn't wanna pay for it, then the county owns a building that with a leaky roof.
Right.
Okay.
Come back to us if if they will not.
Just pay it. I'll bring it up to the next Parks and Rec meeting.
I have a comment. Make one comment. And I and I love Parks and Rec and I and I think the deer park is absolutely, the nature park is absolutely wonderful. But until this all came along, uh, the new board for Parks and Rec and then Mister Griffin's uh, did the five oh one C three. Uh, before that already happened, our 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 only choice was before this happened was to close it, get rid of all the deer and close it completely. So this group has come along and um, that's why we still have it. The nature park, because the RV park was financing the nature park basically, to keep it going. I mean, I remember the day when I'd be begging somebody for for hay and I'd pull it on my trailer and haul it out the deer park. It was tough putting all that hay on that wagon, my little car pulling it out there, but.
Karen, did you have something?
I do. Your nature park is not in good financial shape. The revenue so far this year, and I pulled this report today, is nine thousand three hundred eighty five dollars, nature park revenue. The nature park expenditures is thirty two thousand six hundred and forty two dollars. Your parks overall only have liquid cash of eleven thousand one hundred eleven dollars. The reman- remaining fund balance is all fixed assets. Your spendable cash right now for the parks is only eleven thousand. And the expenditures for the nature park are up far, far, far exceed the revenues coming in.
Well, that's why they created the five oh one C three.
But it's not covering, they're not giving it to the county to help cover these expenses.
Not yet.
Okay, so I just want you all to be.
I gotta say something. I was not aware of that. You guys are hounding the fact that we have a beautiful chunk of property at the high banks. And we're fighting more than ever to get a five oh one C three created so we can keep that property that generates money for our businesses, that our local residents use. Why, if you guys are sending sixty thousand dollars in the bank, aren't you, aren't you paying for some of these bills?
I've mentioned this at the at the Parks and Rec meeting that we would, that when when the year settles up and we're right here at the settlement time, then I would talk with the five oh one C three about about uh, supplementing the supplementing the park.
What have we, what have we, what what costs are we talking about? I I guess I I I I'm wrong as well. I I thought it was covered.
Well, we we only live on donations up there.
I understand that, but I thought the donations covered the expenditures.
In some years they do, but most of the time, just like Brenda said, the RV park subsidized the nature park.
In the past.
In the past.
And do you want me to explain a little bit further about the combined revenues and expenditures for the parks? Your gain this year, like the week to go, is only two thousand seven hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So all of your revenue generated from the RV park is covering the cost of your nature park. And you are only gonna have a gain of two thousand seven hundred dollars this year.
That's at least covered.
Barely.
I've, right, but we're at least covered, right? Just go with gas. Did you get all that, Brenda?
I got it.
We do not have that in the park's budget to spend.
Five oh one C three group from there to come talk to us.
Sure.
So we can get some more explanation.
Sure.
But as of right now, I mean, it it has been covered. Just again, I agree barely. I mean, obviously, we're not making any money on it, but we haven't had to pay. It's.
Right.
But I agree this roof.
Really close this year, yeah.
So I guess my question is, is what is the the five oh one three C spending money on?
Nothing. We're trying to bank it. We're trying to get an endowment, so it'll, it'll be a continuing a fund.
Well, if you're not spending it, it is continuing.
Okay, but this is, wait a minute, this is a legal group.
Agreed.
Filed with the IRS. I mean.
Agreed.
They can hold, that legal group can hold money as long as it wants.
But I thought the purpose of that group is to maintain this this nature park.
Okay, but it has a group of people that have to decide, just like this group people decides on things too.
Okay.
But it's sep- totally separate from this group. Okay, I will talk to that group. And I'll ask them to come here and explain to you guys if you if you'd like. That's fine. But but uh, you know, that's, it was formed, it was formed to to help the park and it has. I mean, we we put money up toward the fencing. There's been money put up toward the fencing. There's been money for feed, for hay. Uh, Brenda hasn't had, pull it up there with her car, but. Hay has been donated and fundraising is has been happening. You know, we just, we're trying to look down the road farther than just this month. We're trying to take a look at how we can fund this thing for years to go.
Yeah, and I would like to make note, I mean, the end game on that is smart. I mean, you've got some smart people involved. But I think the main thing is the transparency of it. We're just really surprised having that much money in the bank seeing none of it being used. That's a big thing for me. I mean, I think it's a great that we have it. And I see what you guys are doing, but we just were not aware of.
Mine's not necessarily that it's not being you, well, I guess, yeah, not being used for something like the seventeen thousand dollar roof. That's what I would think that that would be utilized for. So, yeah.
Good.
Please.
Um, this endowment fund, I I don't know what entails to make an endowment fund. I don't.
I don't.
But but Mister Griffin does.
Yes.
Um, is another part of the family, has the family has been uh, a significant part of um, oils for forever endowment. And every year they giving out more and more and more scholarships to students out of the heights. And that was an endowment, and that's what they did, did that so it'd live on forever. It would continue to be making money so they can continue to give out scholarships. And I, it appears that this is just started with Mister Griffin and uh, it appears that that is exactly what they want here. So this park go on forever through this endowment.
But we need to make sure this park is, especially with where we are financially, is not costing the county any money.
I understand that and it and it shouldn't.
Well, seven years ago, though, it was going to, it was starting to, Karen, to attest to that. Because the the repairs and the the needed repairs at the RV park exceeded that year. And then, and then it didn't have enough money coming out of the RV park to take care of the nature park.
Yeah.
So then we went into panic mode and luckily enough, there was two young, there was a young couple up there taking care of the park at that time. She gets on Facebook, does a GoFundMe page and raises eight grand really quick.
Yeah.
And then I started getting phone calls from different people saying, hey, I'd like to help out. What can I do? And how can I, can I get on a committee and things like that? Well, Karen came to me and said, well, Craig, this is what's happening and showed me the books. And I said, well, there must be a committee. And she said, yes, there's a Parks and Rec Committee. I wasn't on it at the time. And um, we found out that, yeah, there was. They most of them vacationed in Florida all winter. And you, they didn't have meetings during the winter, so we kinda had to wait till April for everybody to come back. And then we found out that there was people that didn't even go to the meetings because there was nobody wanted to be on the committee. Nobody, you know, we don't have, oh, we have twenty one, twenty two thousand people in this county, but not too many people volunteer.
Great.
Okay, and so you got these committees and and until a, until a a crisis comes up, they don't care about your committee.
It's a commitment, it's a cost, you know, everybody's.
Absolutely, it is, but you know, and we're in that day and age where you know, our our generations coming up are not volunteering and they're not belonging to things anymore. We know that. That's happening all the time. Now, there are exceptions and that's great, but uh, as a general rule, there isn't. So, you know, this whole Parks and Rec thing has been a, a an evolving process. And we're, we're just saying, we're just saying, look, it, there's some, this is, this is an asset owned by the county.
Great.
Okay, now I, let me tell you, fundraising rebuilt that house. There's a house there. The caretaker lives in the house for free, but we don't pay them to take care of the deer. That's their pay. In lieu of pay, they get to live there. That house has been totally remodeled from the bottom to the top. And that was all fundraising money. We didn't come to the, the Parks and Rec Committee did not come to the county board of commissioners to ask for money to rebuild that. There's been a lot of improvements. We've, we've doubled the size of the the fencing in there to accommodate the deer and more deer. We get, I don't even know, thousands of people that come to that park every year. It's free to go see it. We ask for donations. We get pennies. You know, we're looking at different ways. We're thinking about QR codes and things like that to maybe generate some money that way, because a lot of people nowadays don't carry cash on them. You know, I can tell you, my son comes up here and carries a five dollar bill with him. So when he goes to nature park, there's no place to put his card, so he doesn't make a donation. So then when we look at, when the treasurer gives us the the report, donations are down. It's a trend that's happening.
Yeah.
So we're looking at different ways to generate it. Same with the five oh one C three. We're just looking at different ways.
Thank you. Is there any parks that aren't costing us any money to the county?
These are the only two that are on general ledger.
Pointer, we got Pointer Hill Park, but we have an antenna there, a tower, right?
We have a consumer bill there.
We have a consumer's bill there and and our maintenance van goes up and cuts the grass. But no, gen- all, the tower doesn't generate money.
Not that I'm aware of.
Really?
Not that I'm aware of.
We should look into that. Oh.
Yeah.
No, is there nine one one up on Indian Hills?
Nine one one, it is nine one one dollar.
Nine one one's in Ross County, up on Indian Hills. All past Wales. Well, that's only two miles away. I don't know why you have to repeat off that one.
Is that it on the nature park? Thank you.
Well, let's take a look at, we're getting revenue off that tower. I I was told we were, but.
I'd sure like to find it if we are.
Waste removal.
I just uh, wanna just advise the board, our waste contractors are starting to come up. Actually, I had a conversation last week. Uh, we do have a pervasion in our purchasing policy that says, this is in section I, the purchase of goods and services through cooperative purchasing agreements, such as the state of Michigan Extended Purchasing Program, that's MY DEAL, which selects its vendors through an open competitive process, shall not be subject to the competitive bidding requirement. My intention is to um, start utilizing the MY DEAL for all of our waste pickup. Get them all under one agreement, but use that MY DEAL um, economy of size, if you will, uh, purchase on this. Now, all the local haulers are listed in there. You know, waste management is in there. I am, I've been trying for about a half hour to remember the green truck. GFO. Yeah, uh, are in there. So, uh, well, we should be able to get a much better price than just going off on our own and getting a single contract. Uh, this kinda gets to the point two of consolidating all of our waste pickup under one. Uh, the idea would have been to put out an RFP and get one price. But so long as MY DEAL already has it, the prices are already negotiated, assuming they're better than what we're getting on our own, which I can't imagine they they wouldn't be. Uh, that the intention would be to go with that agreement. Get us all under one contract for all of our waste and hopefully get a better price all the way around.
So right now, you're basically getting a bid. We're gonna see what the price is gonna be.
Yeah, the bids are already in. MY DEAL lists them on the uh, on their webpage. And it's now a matter of figuring out which one of these is gonna give us the best deal. Uh, and that's it. That's all we have to do at that point. It's because it's already been bid, we can go with the best price.
So I guess, what are you, I I didn't see any bids on here. Did I miss them?
No, the bids, they're already posted on MY DEAL. So, I mean, that's this, the the purpose of the language was if it's on MY DEAL, it's already been competitive bid, we can go with those. We don't have to rebid it ourselves and go through that process.
So we don't have a cost that we haven't accepted the bid?
Yeah, my point here was just bringing this to your attention that this is in process. Process. Um, you know, if we have to have a contract, obviously, that will come to you uh, for approval. And uh, because it's my deal, we may not need a separate contract. And what's happening is it's kind of like our health insurance. It's pooled with. A number of other like state facilities that are already utilizing this, so we're taking advantage of the state price. Uh, some of the areas that I saw under the waste contract, there was uh. Uh, agreements for a lot of state facilities up and down I seventy five from here all the way up to Gaylord. So, uh, you know, state. I'm not sure what the facility is up in Gaylord, for instance, was listed. That's why they bid this out that way. All the rest of us are able to take advantage of that pricing and hopefully, like I say, get a much better deal than we get on our own.
So it'll be brought back to us before the final.
Right. Well, the. The contracts are are already with the state. It's just a matter then of us saying, yes, we want to be a part of that. So it'll be a little bit different than what you're used to. You're not actually gonna have a contract. You're just agreeing to utilize some ideal purchasing.
Okay, but we'll see costs.
So Tim, you can see the numbers now.
They have them on there now and they base them on the size of the container that's being dumped. Um, I think um, it's Kelly that already did the inventory for me, so I know what the, where the containers are and the rough size of them. So it should be pretty easy to come up with the number that we'll have for each of these, as these contracts come out for each one of them.
So by Monday, we could see that possible cost savings.
Yeah, I've actually already seen the spreadsheet. I just need to match it now to our. Containers, so we know exactly which price we're dealing with.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Simmons.
Uh, later on, before we drink, and I I would like to. Talk about the jail for a few minutes.
Anything else on waste removal?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Simmons.
May I talk about the jail?
Yes.
I guess I need to talk to. Uh, the sheriff and uh. Individuals in charge of the jail. I have a couple of questions to ask.
Can you guys come on up? Did you add this to the agenda and?
No, I didn't. I just.
Okay.
It was a brainstorm I just came up with.
Hopefully, it's a good one. Sit down, boys.
They brought up that uh. That's me that uh. The jail and the sheriff's department is the only, the only ones that were not on a thirty five hour work week, is that right? And and I understand that, I understand that. Ju- just a thought, I see sometimes, you know, sometimes you have um. Nine, ten, eleven. Uh, twelve people working at the jail. On a day, so is there any way, I'm just asking. You know, uh, brainstorm. That they could work um. Three twelve hours shifts or something like that for like thirty six hours? And then for um. And give up and give up the four hours for the forty hours. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I know, we're we're bound by contract too, I I believe, our union contract.
Right, I understand that, but I thought maybe if you could talk to the union just, you know. I mean, it could save us probably right around eighty thousand dollars a year. I I guess I'm trying to save jobs. And uh, was wondering if they would consent. To do that. Help save jobs. It may not be ju- their jobs, because I mean, they, they have to be there too, but. You know, I don't want to have to look at other places.
I I I get what you're saying. I'd have to do some research on it, you know.
The problem with the jails is it's gonna close for that amount of time to be taken on.
And and I understand.
Twenty four hours a day.
Understand, but sometimes you have nine people, sometimes you have ten people, sometimes you have mostly eleven. And then sometimes you have twelve.
What do you mean?
People working in the jail in a day? How many did you have working in shifts?
Uh, four. Five on the day. Staff sergeant, five, so five on the day and four on the night.
Okay. So. So that's nine.
Total, I have a twenty four hour period.
Yeah, that 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 keeps us in compliance too, so that's huge.
And then four of them days, one of them. Two of them people are off for that four hours, so they're not working eighty four hours. And someone's covering that, you know. While they're gone. Those are on. They work Monday, Tuesday. Then you work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then you work Wednesday, Thursday, the next week. They work seven days every two weeks. But during that time, they have to take an eight hour day, otherwise they'd be working eighty four hours. Instead of eight.
Okay. Why do we just not do those eight hours and they just?
Would be there. They would have, they'd be scheduled for eighty four then. That would be four hours of overtime each shift.
No, no, I'm saying not work that that particular eight hour shift, if they work. Three twelve hour shifts.
You mean not work that eight hour shift at all?
But I still have to have bodies there. I only have enough bodies to make a schedule. Without having people.
Is there any that does twelve hour shifts?
Yes.
There is.
Um, the whole, most of staff.
Do is twelve hour shifts.
I have two cooks that rotate their rotation. One does a. That rotation with shift A and one does their rotation with shift B. It's how the two cooks.
I really wish you'd just kind of look at that to see if that could could happen.
Why don't you, why don't you take time out, come over and see us and we'll go over that that uh. That scheduling with you, so you can see it in front of you. And then you know, you know exactly what what we're doing over there.
I think we're gonna intervene here because I mean, you you know your job, we don't know your job. We're just looking at it from a budget standpoint. We're asking, she came up with that idea. It's you guys to see if it's Google or not.
And I appreciate that, but I I think for her to really grasp it, I think, look at, we gotta get that, get that schedule out and then she'll understand what we're doing here. Just for us to explain that is probably difficult to. I comprehend it.
I think you're asking and you're reaching, which is greatly appreciated. You guys just, just oh, look at anything, anything you can possibly do to save money, which is what you're looking for. To keep everybody employed, keep you guys open and moving, keep everything flowing. If you can come up with any ideas. We would greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not getting defensive at all.
No, I understand that.
Just want, you you want to come and see it.
I have another question.
But I could look at it and it's still, because I have no idea what you do. I get that.
We uh. We do the very best we can, for sure, for, uh, you know, stay in. Stay in uh, where we gotta be at DOC.
Right, if there's any staffing adjustments you can make to save money. But have people keep their hours would be greatly appreciated. Yes, Brenda.
With the with the fluctuation um. Means inmates that you have. How do, how do you control the 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 grocery content, this kind of stuff that? I know how you operate the the commissary fund, but as far as the food goes. Uh, it pretty much stays the same all the time. Even if it doesn't, even if when the inmate. Population fluctuates. I mean, how how do we control how much money we're spending on the grocery? Who takes, who takes care of them? Who looks after that?
I I looked at your question about the price going up. From last year's fiscal year, this year's fiscal year, there was eight, almost nine thousand more meals served this year. Than the previous year.
But inmate, inmate numbers are down.
From last year, they're up. Like I had seventy eight yesterday. I mean, we have to go, I can ask Nicole what our ADP was last year. It's up this year compared to last year.
Again, just hoping these numbers are being watched and we're trying to save money wherever we can, you know.
But I went through all, I do a report every month that I have all the meals served for each month for like the last four or five years. And went through and pulled all of reports today and compared the last fiscal year to this fiscal year.
Making sure we're shopping where we can get the cheapest things, you know, I just.
We we.
On our due diligence, because there was a huge jump, I mean. Huge jump there, I I just, just take a look at everything, please.
I have another question. When you do road patrol, this is back to the sheriff now, this is, this is not corrections now. How how do you, how do you do road patrol? I mean, at night. How many cars are out? How many guys are out?
What what I did, I used to have two cars out. And then double up at ten o'clock. But what I did here, I don't know, a few months ago, probably a couple of months ago. I told our night guys, I want you in one car. I wanna, I wanna cut down on the gas as well. We gotta watch the budget, so. Right at six o'clock, they double up. I have one car. I used to have two, uh, just just for the exposures. But with the budget that that we do that we're we're faced with back then, a couple, a couple of months ago, I doubled them up. And that puts one car out there.
Okay. This is, this is the next question I have. And you probably think I I'm attacking, I just, I just don't understand, I really don't. So we have road patrol now twenty four hours a day, right?
Yes.
Okay. On July, I saw them. The road patrol and all I saw was what, fifty eight hours? Of road patrol here, road patrol there. And there's seven hundred and twenty hours in a thirty day month for twenty four hours times thirty is seven hundred and twenty. What happens all the other hours? That's why I'm confused. That's why I don't understand. When you give the figures, fifty eight hours of road patrol.
I mean, when it's, when he hands us the paper that looks at the counties of how many hours?
Yes.
Our patrols. That's why I meant township, I'm sorry.
And there's seven hundred and twenty hours in a. In a month.
They'll see it for February stay next week.
Okay.
So these hours are are the hours that are patrolled.
Are you, are you looking at the township?
All the township, yeah.
Okay, that's. That's what where they, they would go into a specific township and give extra patrol, get into the, get into the inner. Uh, uh, inner roads, so they're seen. So they're seen in them, in them uh. Uh, neighborhoods. They're they're handling complaints. You see that there's four hundred and thirty five complaints in that month of August.
Yes.
They're handling complaints, they're doing. Their uh, uh, report writing, they're serving papers. They're doing various and 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 a lot of things. They're doing a lot of things, but but what you're seeing on that township. Is that they're, they're dedicating. An hour per shift in a, in a, you know, in a, in a certain uh. Certain area, thank you. And 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 the reason why that's there is so they're seen, uh, the the car seen going by to these neighborhoods and. They know that there is patrol out there. They're paying for their patrol and they're seeing their cars. And and the whole idea behind that is if if a person sees a car in their neighborhood. They're more apt to vote for that millage because they know the cars are out there.
All right, I was just curious, because I saw these hours, I thought, wait a minute, these hours are, and there's this seven hundred and twenty, okay, I understand what you're saying.
That's just, that's just.
All these other things take time also.
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
I got you.
Any other questions?
No, I'm just trying to find something.
I appreciate all your brainstorming, I I do, and I I think it's, I don't think at the end of the day, we're never gonna know what their job is. If they can do anything to to help us balance this budget, it would be greatly appreciated.
We will, we will dig hard into this. Yeah, all our, everybody knows where we're at, all the elected, elected, elected officers, people, we know where we're at, so. We we know we have to work hard at it and and we plan on it, I'm sure. I'm sure we're planning on gonna work hard to trim our budget whenever we can.
We would greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. And and like I said, I I, I'm gonna look at this traffic interdiction enforcement. Um, I got some ideas and I want to run it by my under sheriff and and uh. You'll hear, you'll hear about Monday.
Perfect. Is there any way, if if you happen to get it before, anytime I'm Monday, I'm I'm working on it, like I like seeing stuff beforehand, if you're at all possible. Whatever, I understand, but whatever you can get, please get.
Okay, I just want to sit down with Paul first.
Understandable.
And and uh, maybe we can, we'll some.
Perfect, thank you.
If it's money, we'll take it.
I hear you.
Any other, is there any public comment out there? Come on up. Oh, gosh. Are you gonna, are you gonna give us some money? Save us some money?
All right, um, as most of you know, we're, we have, we're currently. Have an opening in front of the court that we've been. Would be first round interviews, we have second round interviews next week. However, I've heard there's talk about. Freeze and stuff like that. I guess we're just looking for your guidance. Do I continue to replace this employee?
I didn't know there was an opening. When did this person leave?
Uh, she actually, somebody left in Maya in the probate court. And the lady from the front of the court moved up there, some others don't think about it, you know. Roughly, uh, we conducted first round interviews. Um, the second round interviews are next week. I would say child, it's the uh, front of the court, first, there's Michael just gets her on a sheet and tells you what that person does. I guess the biggest point I'd like to point out is this is a position that's sixty six percent funded by. Um, the government, so not, not the county, I should say. Uh, so the actual, depending on who the employee would be hired. Whether they need a family plan or a single plan or whatever, no plan. Um, that twenty thousand dollar cost, I think, I mean, could actually be less. And that's, that's the numbers on the employee that left, is that correct?
That's what's currently budget, the twenty four budget for the one that we thought was going to be there.
And obviously, the new person would not come in a year, five or six or whatever she was at, so she, so it's gonna be a lesser number. But I guess, like I say, we're just kind of looking. For guidance, do I cancel these interviews or do I continue? Um, it's not a new position, obviously, this is. Uh, Michael gave you a chart with about twelve hundred. Roughly, close to twelve hundred files and open files and. Front of the court, fuck about two point six million dollar a year. Obviously, that's not only revenue, that's supposed to the mothers and. Spoiled parents, so.
That's just a number I don't think we've ever talked about before, so looking at the fact that Ogma County, the Ogma County front of the court distributes two point six million dollars in child support every year. Roughly, we've had highs of two point seven, almost two point eight.
Or lower two point five.
Just under two point five. Um, that we do distribute um, yearly.
So when child support's paid, they come and pay you and you pay them. You pay the person.
Well, yeah, we just, the money's distributed. A lot of it is, a lot of it is automated.
We get some fees, we get some fees, but not a whole, the most of it is support that's a pass through to the parents, so.
This number is support. This doesn't include the fees that are generated. Um, so if you look at a a. A four hundred and forty eight thousand dollar budget. Um, these numbers are just coming out of my head, so don't hold me to it. This is um, four hundred and forty eight thousand dollar budget. By the time we generate revenue. Including the reimbursement from the feds, the the county appropriation this year is a hundred and forty one thousand, last year it was a hundred and fifty. Um, so we're down nine thousand there. We found the fifteen thousand dollars in additional revenue for front of the court. Um, because the the um. Cost allocation plan came back with a higher number than we've had since I first took over in twenty seventeen. Uh, so we were able to generate a little more revenue, some directly into the um, general fund, that money from the cost allocation plan. Um, and the the nine thousand just in savings. Um, in the amount of appropriation we needed to operate, which is, we take all the revenue we'll get from everywhere we can get it, and then the county picks up. In a preparation amount, what is left in the budget.
How many, how many uh? How many clerks slash receptionists do you have in there right now?
I have one clerk slash receptionist, two enforcement officers, one financial officer and myself. Then we have a, and then we have a referee who is forty sixty shared with the childcare fund. Um, besides Worsky, the juvenile director and and referee does domestic relations hearings as well. We're not a large. It is the only clerical position that we have in an office.
Comments, Commissioner Wiltzy?
Uh, so this position's been vacant for thirty days.
About a, about a month, just thirty three weeks. I can't remember.
Who's been doing all the work now?
Uh, a large portion of it has um, been, have been. Shouldn't say a large portion of it, a portion of it has been picked up by our financial officer. Um, because the person who vacated the position is also in one of our offices. She has been working, coming down and picking up some of the.
Sent her down today to fill in. From upstairs to cover her old job, so.
So between those two things, she's been coming down to cover as well, pick up some of the stuff that we can't get to, um, to get us through until we could get somebody hired. All the time. She's trying to learn the new job upstairs.
She's being trained on the new job.
But has come down.
She was needed today because somebody called in sick and so we, she had to go downstairs today to do that, dude, it's. So we're juggling.
It's kind of nice to see that you're sharing personnel like that. Maybe that should happen more often with more personnel.
And we try, I mean, it's not possible right now because she's just, just the way things are going, but um.
But if it's working.
So I guess they were looking for guidance, um. It's a, I haven't heard, in the meetings I've been, I haven't heard anything about. The front of the court. Uh, employee reduction, but I understand everything's on the table, so. Um, so that's where, why we're here is to. Cancel these interviews, should I? Continue with them, the interviews are Tuesday, Tuesday. So I just got one more thing.
I guess my question is, is, is. I guess my question is, is, is. Obviously, this is good, this could possibly impact, if if this increases our workload. And the response time on on financial support for single parents. Um, I guess, what do you predict without filling this, they, this position, um, how backlogged are you gonna get?
I've never been in that position, so it's really hard for me to speculate. How, what effect that's going to have, what I will say is, we're, part of what the money that we earn in revenue is based off performance factors. Um, there are five federal performance factors, um, additional sub-factors that we also are 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 bound to, um.
We, we do, we collect with more.
Correct. The, the higher, the higher we keep increasing those numbers, the more cut of the pie we get. From the money that the feds give to Michigan. Um. Of those factors, right now, there is one that's maximized, if we reach eighty percent, we maximize, we try consistently to to increase those numbers to make, get everything to eighty percent, we're not there yet. But we try, um, to do that. My concern is, if you start. Or if we take the position out and we start overloading or distributing that work among the three people that are left. If those numbers start going down, then we could potentially lose our, that cut of the pie, so then that revenue that we generate from the feds goes down.
Have you ever been staffed previously at at this level that you're currently at?
With the one person out? Never, not in my time there.
Well, and the two, the two caseworkers aren't really clerical, I mean, there's. Like I say, there's, there's one clerk perceptionist. Financial person who's been covering the best he can, then the two caseworkers, which one case worker gets. Parents A through L or whatever it is, the other person, they, that's how they split their caseload, um, and then the referee, so that's, that's the only people we have, we don't have. Bunch of people sitting around, I guess, but.
Commissioner Wiltsey?
Um. I mean, obviously, you see that there's a chance for, you know, laying off public safety, looking at, you know, our jail. Is there any way, I know you, you have this person right now that's, that's juggling. But do you think there's a way? That. You know, that certain times in in our careers and jobs, there's times sometimes we just gotta really. Pull together and and get things done, I mean, is there any way you guys think you could? Take that person that's doing this and 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 get creative with a combination to try to. Be able to do this without bringing in another person?
She would not be sixty-seven percent reimbursable then, if she's.
Correct.
So you'd lose all that. Two-thirds of, only you'd lose forty-seven thousand dollars. But obviously, she would be for any time she put in, but it wouldn't be. And four D cases in the front of the court office, so. It's somewhere between. Forty-seven thousand and. Um, twenty-five thousand, or something, you probably lose that. Revenue from the federal government.
So our revenue for this individual basically covers our expense to the county for this person.
Revenue, that's you get, you reimburse sixty-six percent of. The salary and benefits.
Sure. So it's not revenue to the county, it's like.
No, it's replaced, yeah, it's, it's covered, we're not, we pay the person, and then they re-reimburs sixty-seven, sixty-six percent of it.
So they pay seven thousand, we pay twenty dollars.
No, yeah, no, uh, no. Uh, the total is, the total cost of this individual is sixty-seven thousand, as exists, the county pays twenty of that sixty-seven.
All right, that's the county's share. And that's based, again, on a person with a. Family plan, insurance, and stuff like that, and then.
That includes insurance and everything on this.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that that we understand, this isn't an increase to what we've asked for, this is already, already, just.
Yeah, we're not trying to.
The wrong.
Mr. Scott, comment?
It's the same thing I said last night, there's statutory. Requirements that we have, the courts is a statutory requirement. Okay? It, we get, we get most of it paid back to us. This is a position that's already there. They're all, they're running it, uh. This is the court that comes and sees us all the time, we know that they're running very well. I, this, you know, I, I get the cutting, 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 but, you know. This is the question I had about the seventy-five hundred dollars to the animal shelter, that's not statutory, I don't have to catch a dog. But I have to have a court. Now, it's nice to catch a dog when you can, but the thing is, that you didn't even write, but you didn't even have a question about seventy-five hundred dollars to the, to the animal shelter, now you're. Picking on the courts here, that's a statutory.
We're not picking, we're not picking, we're asking questions.
Okay.
How are we picking on?
Why, and you're asking.
Guys.
It's not picking.
Fine, oh, I'm sorry, I used the wrong word, all right.
Thank you, enough.
Slow down, mom.
Mr. Scott?
We're fine, we're fine.
We're grown men, we're fine.
Thank you.
No wonder.
Any other comments? I have no problem with this position. I, I think it's, uh, again, something that's necessary for.
Well, obviously, you're, gotta make a budget decision by next week, and. We can go ahead and do the interviews and not offer anybody a job till we know the budget's set.
But we do appreciate you very much coming and bringing this to us, it is appreciated.
Doesn't, uh, have to address the second issue. Um, every October first, we start a new contract with our court-appointed attorneys in my court. Um, I have the contract signed by four out of the six, we've had two retirements last year, so it's. We have new, new players, new parties, uh, but I, I got four out of the six signatures, I'll hopefully get that to Tim. Hopefully, I can find Mr. Shy River and Mr. Richards by tomorrow and get to, get it to him as quickly as possible, but it's a yearly thing, I plugged it in roughly this. Within, under one percent of the number, uh, from last year, so let's, but it's a, a yearly thing we have to do, and it's one of those things that. Before I got here, I think, kind of. Got overlooked a little bit, I know, I know you've done contracts before, like retroactive from November, December, when, when it, when it over, when it overlapped, so to speak, so, but I will have it to Tim. I can get him a copy tomorrow, but not all the signatures, if you wanna look, it's the same exact contract we've done for. Twenty years, so.
Is it an annual contract?
It's an annual, every October first, although I do hear that the state may be looking at a different system. And for the two thousand twenty-five fiscal year, going to more like the MIDC stuff like district court has, so stay tuned, but as of right now, it's the same exact thing we've had for twenty years, so. I just wanted to point that out, that you'll be getting that hopefully next week, so.
Okay, do we need to do anything with that?
We do.
Just so that you're aware, and and, cause typically, you don't let any, on the agenda unless it's come through committee the whole first, but this is a standard, I mean, I've seen it.
This is the same exact thing, but I, and I honestly. Thought about it when I'm sitting there tonight, well, I should probably mention that, so that we hadn't even talked about mentioning it, so.
I'm, assume that it'll be on there then, and if it doesn't.
I'll, I'll get you a copy tomorrow, Tim, with, uh, I won't have all the signatures yet, but we'll be working on it, so.
Thank you, guys.
Can I say one more thing?
Go ahead.
I know things got a little heated there, but everything's fine.
Well, I had the floor. I, I asked for the floor, and I had the floor.
But I, what I'd like to say is, no, I, I agree, I think, you know, I want you guys to keep this momentum going and try to find the best person we can have for there, so I think we're all in agreeance on this. Uh, so I just don't want you guys to lose that momentum.
Cause there will be a level for year one persons replacing a year six person.
We have no idea what the fringes are gonna be, and there's significant savings if it's a different health insurance.
Levels.
You know, if it was certainly a different health insurance.
Is we love or a single or a family, I don't know, so.
We should know that.
Thank you for the transparency, thanks, guys. Any other public comment? Yes?
Hello, everyone, Karen Plaski, Ogumaw County Treasurer. I too have an vacancy in my office, I have a job posting that will expire tomorrow at four thirty, and I intend to fill the position. As you know, I've mentioned to you in the past. Statutory office, and you are transferring funds from the tax reversion fund into your general fund that covers the cost of my staff. So you are not spending general fund dollars for the staff in my office. I do intend to fill the position unless there's an issue. Again, funding is not an issue for the staff in my office.
I didn't know you had an open position.
Tim mentioned it to you the other night. My accounting clerk, my accounting clerk got nervous with the layoffs that you were discussing, and started putting your applications out and had a better offer than what we offer here at the county.
Really?
So we're losing an asset to this county because of the. Layoff rollercoaster ride that we've all been on.
Is it a part-time position or a full-time position?
My full-time accounting clerk.
So I guess how would, if there's a layoff, how would that impacted her job?
The low seniority person, she's only been here two years, so if you were starting a layoff situation, she possibly could have been bumped by a higher seniority person, and.
Well, that's unfortunate.
It is terrible, we're losing somebody who could have blossomed into a huge asset for this county.
But you said she got a, a better offer?
She did, more money, better benefits, remote work.
Good for her.
Yes, I, I, yes, I. I'm very happy that she found what she could, and it's gonna work out better for her, but we're losing an asset. Which is very sad, but I do intend to fill the position.
Let's find another good asset.
I'm gonna find another good asset, and then, and the good thing is, with the notice you gave me. By filling the position quickly. I'll have training time with our current asset, and hopefully mold and create another great employee for our office.
Mr. Scott?
We have a very good benefit package, but. You gotta understand, I think people need to understand, the, the first floor or the whole county building, thirty-five hours.
Thirty-five.
Everybody's at thirty-five, have been for years. That's, you know, that's what you bring home, is wages for hours, you know, we, we take home our benefits too, but. What buys the groceries is thirty-five dollars a, a, a week, thirty-five hours a week, thirty-five hours a week.
Yes, that's.
That's what, so another job. Another job can, that, uh. You know, other jobs are, in, on a public sector used to be the job you'd have. I mean, the road commission's got a opening they've had for how long now, two months, three months?
Yeah.
They can't fill them, they're not, they, they couldn't get summer help this year. Because they. Municipalities are not paying out. Because the money isn't there, costs are going up, this is the problem we're running into with budget, costs are going up, and the revenue coming in is not there. And, and for our people in our county building, thirty-five hours a week. I'm surprised that more aren't looking for a job.
They are.
Well, there you go.
Lots coming.
Yeah, yeah.
My, my question is, 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 uh, we haven't made any final decisions on, on the budget, and and again, hopefully there are no layoffs. But what timeframe are you looking at, like hiring this, cause could, if there are layoffs, this could impact this individual that you're hiring?
It possibly could.
What timeframe are you looking at, I guess, is?
The. The job hosting for the union expires tomorrow at four thirty, and I have a candidate.
So an in-house candidate, is that what that means?
Correct, mhm.
But if there are layoffs, that could still impact this, this individual.
Depending on what you cut in the bumping situation.
Yeah, I don't understand on the bumping situation, that's, okay, questions?
Uh-uh, no.
Question? Thank you, thank you for the information, any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We are adjourned.
Got it, Tom?
Yep.